Mr. Solder? Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
Mr. Palestine?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Present.
The village president is not present and is not able to attend by remote attendance. I ask for a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson to act as deciding officer for this meeting. Okay. First and second. Mr. Solder? Aye. Mr. Kelly? Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Palestine? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero. Mr. Cole?
Okay. We have a form with everyone, please write what you. What do we dispute in the United States? And should we follow the states? And should we honor? In this whole, we need justice. Do we have anyone signed up for any public comments?
We do.
Okay. And so everyone's aware, you have a five minute time. We will not cut you off in the middle of a sentence, but please be cognizant of the time you have. Eric will let us know when you're getting close and we'll let you know. It's five minutes so we can keep our meeting on schedule.
Kathleen Carr. Good evening. I believe that we can all agree that governmental processes should be followed and those elected into a position of authority should be respected. In my opinion, regrettably, there have been several incidences in the last three months where that has not happened. Although changes were made as a result of our assertions that your authority had been usurped, in my opinion, those changes on February 28th did not go far enough. Hampshire will support M3 heavy industrial zoning was a phrase that was very prominently displayed on the CBRE listings for the light properties on Dietrich Road. My interpretation is that CBRE was announcing through their website exactly how you would vote by stating Hampshire will support M3 heavy industrial zoning in their marketing brochures. I am concerned that this statement could be construed that a decision has already been made regarding their zoning applications. You and you alone decide what zoning Hampshire will support. CBRE on February 28th deleted the Dietrich Road properties listing from their website. Currently though, there is a large CBRE billboard on the property visible from I-90 that states future industrial use. I sincerely do not understand how CBRE can state on land that is currently zoned farming that it will be zoned for industrial use. I respectfully ask under whose authority are these statements being made? For several months, the light properties were also very publicly displayed on the Village of Hampshire's website under the heading available properties in Hampshire. Currently, this land is in both McHenry and Kane counties and certainly not within the village's boundary. As you know, only Board of Trustees members decide if and when land may be annexed into the village. Again, on February 28th, a website was changed. Currently, the land is listed on the village's website under the heading available industrial slash logistics facilities. With a note that reads properties on Higgins and Dietrich Road removed pending village hearing. Again, these properties that are zoned agricultural. I do not understand in light of the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission voted zero to six against zoning the property to allow for manufacturing uses. How they can be listed as available industrial slash logistics facilities? It is with, it was with a heavy heart on March 7th that I made a phone call that I sincerely did not want to make. I consider Hampshire my hometown. When laws are not being followed though, public citizens are entitled to contact the Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor. Unfortunately, several of my requests for public documents were not being honored. It is my understanding that lawyer requests are supposed to be responded to within five days. I waited over 20 days without any official response. Thankfully, once I contacted the Illinois Attorney General's Office, my requests were promptly responded to. The next point is a factually a question. I may have simply misunderstood the conversation that took place in relation to hiring Mr. Vaselli at your board meeting on April 6th. I have a copy of an email dated March 9th from Mr. Hedges to Mr. Ray and at CC's, Mr. Vaselli. It states in part, Jimmy is taking a look at whether the hearing should be on the 316 BDM agenda or not. I have reviewed the agendas for every meeting in 2023 and I cannot find any mention of Mr. Vaselli on any agendas until April 6th. I don't understand why he was making decisions regarding what is on your agenda prior to April 6th. Mr. Vaselli, I believe that during the April 6th meeting, it was stated that you have been working with the village on the light properties for a while. Can you please tell me in what capacities you were working with the village? Have you ever represented the petitioners?
I have addressed the board.
Those are my questions to the lawyer. As we have been told that most likely the public hearings for the light properties will be scheduled in May. I do think it is important to introduce this email in part into public record. Mr. Ray recommended to the petitioner on March 2nd through an email that you, that quote, you may decide to separate the timing of the petitions. And do the 38 acres before or after the other property to separate the hearings and the crowd a bit, unquote. While I may be completely misinterpreting this email, it makes me question why a public employee would do anything that could in the slightest bit be construed as trying to suppress the people's right to respectfully gather and to be heard. No matter what advice or recommendations the Village of Hampshire employees give to the petitioner, we will stand united, speak together as one public voice in support of our neighbors. Board of Trustee members, I can assure you that members of the community are doing their best to educate themselves about and follow all governmental processes. We acknowledge your authority to make tough decisions and respect those decisions no matter the outcome. Here are copies of what I said and then just a quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to add?
Uh, that's done.
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 Wow, I don't know how I can follow that. That was.
Thank you. That was incredible.
No worries.
You gotta sign up first.
You know, I actually speak to, I'm looking at embrace opportunity, honor tradition. Hampshire's such a wonderful community. I, I just. Every decision we folks make, there's a benefit. I'm hoping you get to understand the benefits of how it's going to help the community. I can't, I, I, I look at our community as a village, as a community, we should grow together as a community. My concern, and I'm looking at the 38 acres on Higgins and 20. Besides our oil wells, our water, the pollution, the noise, the carbon footprints, depending on what M2, if it's on M2 goes through. And they're putting in 200, I think semi parking spots in that location. The other morning I went to Lowe's to get gas. It was five to seven in the morning. As I'm getting, as I'm going to the gas station, there are, I'd say five semis parked along the south side of 20 and I think there was two on the north side before you could even get the gas, turn into the gas station. And then there was another row of semis to the west of it. Um, there's like a building over there and they're all lined up there. So as I'm getting my gas, I'm seeing trucks start to pull out. And they're backing up anywhere from two to three to four, trying to pull out on 20. So then I'm going to go east and so I'm going to work. As I'm trying to see to make my right hand turn, the semis are coming up, they're blocking the view. And I'm thinking, wow, this is amazing. There, besides having semis, my safety is in jeopardy and I'm just trying to go to work. And it's a gas station. Okay. So you folks are looking at possibly putting this on the corner of 20 and Higgins. First of all, you are now putting in a subdivision to south of Harmony, on Harmony Road and Higgins on the west, on the west side there. All that traffic, if they're going to come to 90, they're going to come down Higgins. Just they're not going to go to Allen Road as I believe the other meeting was that they were saying, oh yeah, they'll go to Allen, you know, maybe a light there, so on and so forth. They're going to come down Higgins to go to 20. As far as, there's no way a semi can turn on there, even if you did commercial. Um, uh, ideas there to put in. How are the semis going to make the deliveries? Try and make that turn onto Higgins from 20 if you're heading eastbound on 20. And then, what can you say? I even noticed the, uh, the corner on Big Timber and 20, they're redoing through that whole area. And I believe there's only supposed to be like, I think one semi, two cranes, and then they're going to put like a garage or two, and then mostly just trucks, I think. Wow, they cleared that up pretty darn good. And again, I realize there's going to be changes in the community. And that's not even my, my, my concern is my property, our property, our property as Hampshire. Again, if you guys have some good benefits to the community by putting air things where they are, God bless you on that. But if, if the risks are too much great than benefit, please don't, don't, don't do it to embrace opportunity and don't do it because you honor tradition. Thank you.
Michael Anderson.
Hi. My name is Michael Anderson and I'm here tonight to discuss the ordinance to amend the zoning regulations to add motor vehicles to wash facilities as permitted use in various zoning districts that was tabled at the last meeting. I want to make sure that this board is aware of the environmental and financial impacts this will have to our community and its future. I'll start with the environment. In 2021, the EPA released a stormwater test management practices report on vehicle washing that I provided to you. This report explains that these facilities in a single small town can annually release the balling into the stormwater system. 190 gallons of gasoline, diesel and motor oil, 14 pounds of dissolved copper, 400 pounds of phosphorus and nitrogen, 60 pounds of ammonia. 2,200 pounds of surfacates such as detergents and 3,000 pounds of solids. Additionally, it found that the impacts of these constituents discharging to downstream water bodies can include increased toxicity to living organisms, increased algae buildup and reduced oxygen levels. And while some of this can be avoided with proper filtration drainage maintenance, just looking at the car wash in town through the pictures provided shows that, uh, that will likely not be the case. There will be cracks in concrete and other infrastructure inadequacies and these contaminants will make it into our groundwater. It's not a matter of if, but when and how much. I understand, uh, we live in a trucking community and all this is always there, but why increase it? Why put our water supply at an increased level of risk with this type of activity? You've also heard from experts that Hampshire's water supply is likely to run out by 2050, if not before. Is this the type of wasteful activity? Is this type of wasteful activity how we really want to use our most valuable resource? I'm sure many of you have children, nieces, nephews, or other young people in this community who you care about. I have two little girls myself. Um, how can you possibly look them in the eye and then approve this measure knowing it is a direct detriment to their current health and the viability of their future in this area? For some reason, the environment is not the top priority though, but money is. This is a service. Illinois does not collect sales tax on services from what I can find based on what I can see. It wouldn't increase the village's share of Illinois's motor fuel tax revenue either. Therefore, I cannot see how this will benefit the village's bottom line. How does this benefit the taxpayers you represent and not just the petitioner set to profit from this change? The reality is it won't. We'll not bring people to the town to spend money or increase the overnight stays and the associated hotel motel tax revenue that I heard discussed at length at the budget meeting at the end of March. Instead, it will likely be a cost to the taxpayers as the village at some point will have to remediate the damaging environmental impacts this will cause. This is just another fine example of privatizing profits and burdening municipalities and taxpayers with the monetary and environmental expense. At some point, we as a community and society need to stop mortgaging our, in our children's future in order for the future profit. I ask the board to please consider the serious negative environmental and monetary impact to your constituents as you vote for this ordinance change. Also, I would like to note that there seems to be a pattern of freaking in industrial uses next to residential homes. Um, I live next to 38 acres that people have talked about. My house puts up directly to it. I don't understand why industrial uses need to be that close to residents. I think it's important. Thank you.
Okay, you have the minutes of the previous meeting before you and you can briefly look them over. Any changes, corrections? Any changes, corrections, additions, attractions from the previous April 6th minutes? Very none. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes presented.
To move.
The motions been made and settled. Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Solder? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Palestine? Motion passed six zero.
Okay, we have a couple of proclamations. We usually don't read these. I'll read this one due to the fact our clerk will be ending her, her term here this year. 54 Daniel Professional Municipal Clerks Week is April 30th to May 6th. Whereas the opposite professional municipal clerk, a time honored vital part of local government exists through the world. And whereas the opposite professional municipal clerk is the oldest, not you. And whereas the opposite professional municipal clerk proves a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, province, county and international professional organizations. Uh, now therefore, my previous hair, village president does recognize the week April 30th through May 6th as professional municipal clerks. And further extend appreciation to our clerk, Linda Vasquez and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform. And their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have another one for Arbor Day. I won't read this. It's quite long. But this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planning of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And now it's moved throughout the nation. Um, and doesn't have, April 28th, 2023 is Arbor Day. And Village of Hampshire urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woods.
You're going to tear them down.
Okay, now we will turn it over to our village manager, Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask your consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget, the Village of Hampshire fiscal year 2023, 2024. These lines are making a very brief presentation and then I entertain questions and then I ask for the action.
So I really have no prepared remarks this evening. Um, I did want to let you know that, uh, we have, uh, followed all of the rules with respect to, uh, making the tentative budget available. Um, posting that book on our website here at the town. Uh, we published notice of a public hearing and held a public hearing at our last meeting. And, um, that being said, I just want to thank, uh, all the staff that had input in the budget as well as the budget committee and other board members that attended our budget meeting. So thank you very much. As Mr. Vaselli, can I answer any questions?
Any questions from this slide?
I do. On page 23, we've got the capital outlay from a public, um, streets department and it's listed as a $732,955. And I want to know if we can kind of talk about that since it was originally going to be a tax that was going to be put on water bills. And now I see it as capital outlays. We're just like, one, one, which, which page did you say? On 23?
Are you on 23, the budget or do you mean through the packet?
Oh, is there anything?
I don't know. Capital outlay?
It's the last item at the very bottom.
Okay, that's right about planning.
I got you.
So, um, that includes the sidewalk grant or excuse me, the park and rim, um, remediation that is not the building. Um, the only thing that's in with respect to the public works garage building is the revenue, potential revenue, right? When you adopt this budget, that is not a given, um, as well as a transfer to a capital improvement fund. There's, there's no expenditure for the building. Correct.
Sorry to follow up. In the summary report from the last meeting, you showed the budget and what our beginning fund balance would be, our ending fund balance would be. Did those numbers take into account the expense for a budget or the expense for a building and the income for the building? Should that be potentially pass or not pass in the future?
So, um, it did. It was in and out of the general fund. So it would be collected in the general fund and then transferred out of the general fund to a capital improvement fund. But not, so it's only revenue in fiscal year 24. That's the only thing that is reflected. Did you clarify on that? It's only revenue is that? So another $60 per resident? It's in a capital improvement fund that would increase the fund balance in that particular fund without expenditures in fiscal year 24. So it takes into account that it's going to happen. And that income is coming in. Um, it's, it is reflected in the budget in that way, yes. But it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. We'll have to bring that forward. Um, so if it doesn't happen, those, those items will, you know, you won't see any activity in those items. Where does that leave it if it's included into some of the expected expenditures? It is, it is not in fiscal year 24. There's no expected expenditures of those revenues should you agree to adopt that fee. Yes.
Can I follow up on that one? At the age 36, which is the end of the general fund section. General fund is where we would receive those revenues, correct?
Yes.
You're stating there is no spending for that revenue.
And there's.
Correct.
There is revenues, no expenses, but a transfer out of this fund.
Okay, so when we look at beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, it assumes the receipt and the transfer out.
Correct.
So it shouldn't be an extra amount of whatever that is a wash, right?
That's correct. If you go to fund number four, I apologize, I'm looking at the packet online. So it's page 26. Not, I think that's my 26. So not, not packet 26, but you said fund, yes, fund for capital.
It's okay. You're correct.
You will see just the, just the revenue of the $186,000 transfer into that fund. So that increases that.
Any further questions? Very none. Uh, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2305, adopting the budget for the village manager for the fiscal year 2023 slash 2024. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions? Will clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Cole? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Matt? Mr. Palestine? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed by five.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize the village manager to negotiate and execute a letter of understanding with KDOT District 300 and Crown Construct, Construct, excuse me, Crown Development to construct a traffic signal. At Bridge Press Drive and Big Timber Road with village participation not to exceed $60,000. Yeah, I'm very enthusiastic about this. I think for some of us, this is an important moment. Particularly a couple of years ago, I'm going to be very strong in very serious two years ago. Um, as my agenda supplement indicates, excuse me, as my agenda supplement indicates, at the time, traffic study, studies did not indicate traffic, would be that KDOT would not commit the traffic based on warrants. However, um, after school was built and the temporary crosswalk was placed in service slash progress and we put a crossing there. Since then, KDOT has been studying pedestrian warrants, which is apparently a fairly remote part of the, of the law, part of the guidance from federal guidelines for traffic signals. So they did a study from August until just about a month ago. And that study concluded that the pedestrian warrants did require traffic. So at that point, we were contacted, I was contacted by Kurt Nigga at KDOT indicating that, um, this would be required. My first reaction was, I would talk to a million dollars and he's going to pay for it. Uh, but he came up with a great solution. KDOT feels very strongly about this. They also know that they did not comment or request the light two years ago. So as, as the agenda supplement indicates, uh, they projected the whole project now will be under $180,000. Today they estimated it would be under $14,000. So it could be considerably less than what we're asking today. But they've also agreed that they, they will be the project managers. So they will do all the electrical engineering, they will approve all the permits, which will expedite the process instead of the approval. If this was us applying for a developer in District 300, it would take six months. And Kurt wants to stop light up. When I, when I said something about getting it up before school starts, he said, no, I want it up before school's out. So, um, it probably won't make it now that quickly, but certainly should be up early in the summer. And so this, the signals and crosswalks are fully implemented at a cost to the village of somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000, which I think is a pretty high.
This is a big win. This is a big win. This board fought District 300 and King Kelly for that light. And I think trustee Kelly even told them, we wanted a pedestrian bridge in. For everybody here, they did the traffic study during COVID.
When everything was shut down. I agree. I have to say that I hope the families of the Laker Crossing are watching this video or hearing this, that their concerns are met. That there's going to be light, crosswalk, safety for those children. Maybe it's a good thing, but KDOT's helping with the basketball. And by the way, District 300 and, um, Crown Development have both agreed so we're the last party, we're the last one. If you give me this authorization, it should be completed by Friday Tuesday.
Okay, so with that, uh, I entertain a motion to authorize the village manager to negotiate and execute a letter of understanding with KDOT District 300. And Crown Development to finally construct a traffic signal at Bridge Press Drive and Big Timber with village participation not to exceed 60,000.
And so.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, can I ask? I know this is kind of looking, let's save this a while, but had the traffic study been done appropriately during COVID times? Would we, what would this have caused us to put up that, to get that traffic signal there? I mean, maybe you can't answer that. Would that be a developer putting that traffic light in and we would be?
We would ask the developer to pay for the entire project at the time.
Okay.
I, I would like to just clarify a little bit about the traffic standards. Certainly COVID would have had an impact. The biggest impact would be the homes that have been built in the development. Of course, they're not there. Of course, they're not there to reject. It was projected over time, I believe it was 850 homes in that city. So it was primarily those. And if you recall, we've been talking to somebody about the stoplight. And that's because that development has a lot more traffic, a lot more homes in it. So that part of the traffic, just from the traffic from the development itself. So my guess is that surely people in Lakewood are not traveling much during COVID. They would, because of their traffic, kind of that same research. It's not clear whether it would have been required or not, KDOT being COVID. We got to run the test today to see if it's ready. Because really nothing's happened, except the schools, that's increased a lot. So at this point, I do think it's kind of a moot point, but it's okay to question. Had it come up then, we would have asked, had the traffic study required a light, shown that light would be required at some point in development? We would have asked them if they would be interested.
And don't get me wrong, I'm ecstatic here getting this, because I was one of those people that fought for that light and was extremely disappointed when it didn't happen.
All three of you were on the board at the time.
Yeah. I'm just, I guess my disappointment would be in the fact that we are now as small a fee as it is compared to what it could have been. We are still paying $60,000 for something we invested.
Honestly, when I got the phone call, I wasn't sure anybody was going to step up. And I was surprised that I didn't ask to pay off it before I even brought up.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. To both the participants not to exceed $60,000 for the light. Any other questions, Collins? Or please call the roll.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Palestine. Mr. Allen. What's your desk?
Thank you. With that, we ask your consideration of a motion to approve the updated building permit fee posting. Again, the supplement from Mr. Ray, I don't know if you talked to him.
This is the last time there was a posting approved. I think it was when we first moved over to Safield, so it's been a couple of years. This isn't really increasing permit fees overall. It's just a couple of changes to specific items. And I'll go through those. So the first thing to note is that when the village updated to the 2018 building codes, we included a provision there that the board approved, which is that when a commercial business is built or when it changes hands and ownership or tendency or type of use, the village and Fire Protection District really go in and do a life safety inspection to make sure that it's up to fire code, it's got the fire alarm that needs and it's operating, all those kinds of things. So that's a new type of inspection that we're going to be implementing. And so that wasn't on the fee posting before. Most communities do charge certificates of occupancy fees. I put little charts in there to show you some averages. So staff in consultation with Safield and the Fire Protection District has proposed these new fees for that new type of inspection. You can see there on the certificate of occupancy portion there. Under commercial change, it's one cent per square foot with at least a hundred dollar payment. And for residential, the village has the authority to do so if we happen to know of a problem, which is very rare. But we happen to know of one house that we would like to be able to do that in. So we include it in the code. Every time there's residential sale, that inspection is not going to happen. We often don't even owe a residential sale. But if we happen to know, and if we happen to know of any issues in that house, then we do have the authority to make that inspection and that $75 flat. The second portion of this is that when a new home or new building is ready for occupancy, there are additional things that have to be done beyond just regular building inspections. Our public works crew goes out and performs an inspection related to the water, you know, checking the water meter and the MXU, checking the addresses, the B-box, parkways, grass, all of those things. So the village has never charged any type of fee for public works and administrative time to handle that. And this especially becomes an issue when a house needs a temporary certificate of occupancy before the winter, because then all that work is doubled. Because the public works goes out for the temper and then they go out for the final. So staff is proposing to cover some of that time and increase the general fund revenue by charging $75 for a new house and $150 for a new commercial occupancy check. And that's in line with whatever communities charge, a little less effect.
Does that go to the builder or to the actual person buying the house?
It'll go to whoever the owner is at the time. So most of the time, it's the builder and they decide how they want to make, bake $75 extra dollars into their sale price. Couple other things, there's some other highlighted fees on here that have always been charged by the village and they're just, they haven't been on the building permit fee posting before. So just in the interest of transparency, we'd like to add those things. We charge $450 for each water meter that's in the house. The Fire Protection District has a fee that they collect on new commercial buildings. So they're not really permit fees, but we charged them at the time of permit and thought it would be good to make it transparent, put them on the fee posting. Any questions?
So just real quick, so besides the certificate of occupancy and the water meter, or I'm sorry, water service line inspection fee, which that one is only on new construction.
Correct.
Those are the only new additional fees to this. The rest is just, we've always charged it just for the citizens.
Correct.
And if we can just quick talk about the residential change inspection fee? Because I know it's, I guess, I understand the reason for it. Like if it's a, a home that's been known to either be condemned or vacant for years or whatever, or safety, I understand that. But how do we make that determination of who pays that fee? So if we're not setting a fee even across the board to all residents then, for a same purpose, then I wonder how, what are the guidelines that say, okay, for this sale, we're going to charge the fee. For this sale, we're not going to charge the fee. How do we approach that so that it's, it doesn't start to feel discriminatory toward certain sales and not other sales?
It's really aimed at commercial properties, and that's where we do intend it. Every time there's a change.
Understood, I'm speaking specifically, like the commercial one, I understand. I'm speaking specifically to the residential.
It'd be very rare that we have to be obvious from the outside, the obvious concerns about life safety. That's another way.
As determined by the fire department or?
There's clearly no specific authority there. It's something we would have to take a stretch and say, we think there's something, if there's somebody actually living there, that would be a concern. Maybe a neighborhood expressed some, expressed concern about life safety. We could give the police department an opportunity to do a life safety check that can just go out and move a certain piece of cake. But if there are actually things that are visible from the outside, it looks like it's uncapable, it would be a lengthy process. We could go in and do the inspection. I can only think of one or two properties in the whole building that might apply.
Mr. Ray, if I can ask then, right now, we're, we're charging zero for occupancy fees.
Correct.
So that, so nothing at all?
It's a new inspection.
Okay, so it's just zero, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the village has never had an occupancy fee. Most communities do, just, just as, I don't want to call it an administrative fee, but just for a fee to issue the final certificate of occupancy. It is an administrative process and a permit card is printed and there's checks. But for whatever reason, the village has never had one.
For the first area that we talked about, for the new construction, totally get the $75 fee, checking on all those things. My one question is fire. There's no fire inspection. Is that just because it's assumed it's a brand new house, construction, that it doesn't need any? Or?
Part of, on the commercial side, there is fire review and inspection. Big deal of the permit fees already.
Okay.
On the residential side, the Fire Protection District has expressed that they are not concerned about needing to do an inspection on every new residential home.
Okay, all right, that's exactly what I'm, okay, thank you.
One follow up question, Mr. Ray. On the certificate of occupancy, we currently have, just updated months ago, developer agreements with a lot of the new developments growing up to this. Since this fee and this fee structure was not included because it did not exist, do they now assume that fee or are they grandfathered to not have to pay this because it's not?
The development agreement calls for a six month lag. So we'll notify them that in six months, this will kick in for those Crown developments.
For all developments throughout?
Right.
Is there maybe other than?
Well, if it's, if it's not in the Crown, for example, we have two house projects right now that are in existing built parts of town. If we had another permit like that, that was just an empty eye on an older part of town, they would automatically assume these fees. But the Crown agreement calls for a six month lag on their properties.
At that point, it is instituted regardless of type of inspection.
Correct. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just one clarification then, for the fee schedule that we have for new single family homes, townhomes and duplexes, and that's per living unit, which doesn't include apartments. And on the other page, 56, it's new commercial, industrial and multifamily. So the apartments were got into this?
Yeah, apartment buildings are under commercial codes.
Okay, so then when they change, just, you know, leases, you know, the lease goes to someone else. And is that going to kick this in? Oh, it's just when there's a new building?
Right.
Thanks.
Any further questions? I entertain a motion to approve the updated building permit fee posting schedule. Was made, is there a second? Any further questions? Very none, will clerk call the roll?
Mr. Palestine.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
What's your desk?
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution adopting garbage collection fees under the Blood Brothers contract. This is an annual fee increase. We have an agenda supplement in the packet from Ms. Lyons and she'll answer your questions. And I remind you all again, the fees that residents are paying are still substantially lower than what they were paying before when we had different carrier collection company. And they have very, they've got very positive comments with Blood Brothers as well.
So this is 26 cents a month then for seniors and 41 cents for non seniors. That's the extent of the entire place.
Right.
That's correct.
Can I ask what the resident charges below that? And what the, the 65, 65 more cents for seniors and a dollar more for non seniors? What does that go to? Why do we charge that?
So we have to pay postage, printing and administrative fees to assess these fees.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution 2308, adopting garbage collection fee fees from Blood Brothers on their contractual increase. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other questions, Collins? Very none, will clerk call the roll?
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Soder. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Matt. Mr. Palestine.
Hi.
What's your desk?
Thank you. With that, we would encourage you now, do you have any lively discussion about potential of regulation, regulating this, sorry, did you hear this one?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes. Sorry, can you still have a?
We have a lively discussion. Would you consider a resolution authorizing the opening of a new bank account for the evidence fund? Ms. Lyons?
Um.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's very straightforward. From time to time, there's seizure of monetary assets, if you will. And currently, those assets are being held in the evidence room.
In cash.
In cash. And we'd like to convert that into a bank account for safekeeping basis.
Little question I have is, if we, we used to have an account, it was closed because it was never used. If we reopen the account and we don't have any seizure cash to put in it, are we going to have to pay to keep that account open?
No.
Nothing?
So all of our accounts at First American Bank, we made the recommendation to open the account there, are analyzed together. So we have compensating balances where we will not receive any fees for that. We probably would have to put in a dollar into the banking account just to keep it open.
Off the bucket.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, the, like, I understand if, like, seized cash from a house or a car or, you know, a person, you know, it goes through the evidentiary process of fingerprints or anything else if it's, you know, part of a crime. Is that all done first and then released?
Yeah, anything, anything where there's evidentiary value, like you said, fingerprints or there's blood on it or there's something, there's some, some reason for us to use it for evidence, we actually probably would hold that as evidence, that cash is evidence.
Until the trial.
Even after, I mean, until the trial, right?
Okay.
This is money, either, either money pending seizure or even safekeeping. Any, any cash that we take in that doesn't have like a, a physical evidentiary value for that physical dollar bill.
Okay.
We would, we would deposit in this account. And then, and then as the, the case is, you know, cleared through the process, then we just issue a check back to the society. Or we issue a check to ourselves or to whoever we want to.
Would this include like asset forfeitures? Car gets pulled over, it's got pot in it, it gets, you know, seized and potentially forfeited if it should happen?
Yes.
And then we would get a portion of those proceeds as the arresting agency? That money would also go into that account?
Correct. And we're actually increasing that, that, increasing the frequency of following through that process.
Okay.
So we make sure that we're not missing, you know, I mean, because in those cases, a drug seizure is, a drug seizure, and we're actually, by statute, we can give more.
One of the state's attorneys, Du Page, was assigned specifically to forfeitures. That's what follows their common pieces.
Any further questions? Collins? I entertain a motion for Resolution 2309, authorizing the opening of a new bank account for the evidence fund for the village manager.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions, Collins? Very none, will clerk call the roll?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Matt. Mr. Palestine.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Cole. Motion passed, excuse me.
Thank you. I'll just remind you that the last board meeting, I mentioned that, I think it's been rather popular among the board, to have an opportunity to discuss some of these issues that are more complex, maybe not as simple as they seem, so that we can get good feedback. Drafting order. In this case, we had had some discussion about outdoor seating, providing restaurants. So we're taking a shot at drafting an order, just so you have some people look at it. And Josh is giving you a summary of, excuse me, agenda supplement on the topic. So right now, we have two bars on 72, the one that has outdoor seating, just built that property, and then the other bar has had several outdoor counters in the parking lots, or in this case, they've got a third alcohol. We never received any complaints about that, so we're never responding to those issues. But that is not proper. This board at the last discussion indicated that we wanted to have a fairly liberal, it's a sensitive, very liberal understanding where we could have outdoor seating. This is also true downtown, the restaurants. Well, we have pantry social that has outdoor seating. I bet they did a nice job of it, I think, as well as. Nobody else has expressed an interest in doing it downtown, but it is possible to have outdoor seating on the restaurant. So with that, you have some suggestions in front of you, just some discussion about whether we should hours that they seat outdoors and that sort of thing. This is, this is drafted as a fairly liberal interpretation, because that's what we understood from the last time we moved on the seating. Just encourage you to have some discussion about it. If you should, Josh, you're going to have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Very well. So Red Ox is, you've not mentioned, but Red Ox is outdoor seating too, so that gets pulled into this?
Actually, Josh, I want to mention this side back.
So the other current ordinance that regulates outdoor seating is based on proximity to the public right of way. So they are far enough away from the public right of way that it's not covered.
Aren't they also private, that's a private property too? Like, outdoor seating is compromised on the sidewalk, that's not allowed.
Actually, if you look at the last survey for all the downtown businesses, that half of the sidewalk that is on their business is their property. The village only owns the five feet that's right next to the street.
One of the reasons we didn't tear out that issue, where it could be considered.
So with that, let me ask then, would this ordinance limit mainly on public right of way sidewalks? To only that property owners limit? So for example, we said. To only that property owners limit, so for example, if there's five extra feet on sidewalks on State Street, there would be no outdoor seating allowed in that five foot space? On their property, if they have cafe tables.
The way that the ordinance is written now, it's um, it's, it's, I'll just find the spot. Basically, it says that as long as free pedestrian traffic is allowed, that it can be in the public right of way. So it can't obstruct, you know, parking spaces or particular traffic or anything, but for example, Hints or Social has two or three tables in that bump out area. That is public right of way, but it doesn't keep any kind of traffic of people moving, so the way the ordinance is written now, that could continue. But you wouldn't be able to take up the whole sidewalk, because then.
You still have to lose space for feet.
Yeah, I think, I think it says related to strollers, pedestrian traffic.
Getting wheelchair.
Yeah, wheelchairs. Um, I, yeah, instructions, instructions to sidewalks, so you have to finish the section, yeah. Walker, strollers, pedestrians need to be able to pass and allow sufficient room for these aforementioned. So it would, it would basically be a judgment called by, by staff, as if they could get by. We don't have a specific amount of feet or anything.
Or anybody in the community that has the Hampshire app feels a bit of a struggle.
Right, or they could just post.
Trying to follow my. Only said it because it happened yesterday.
Just for the record, we do recommend the app.
Yes. Sorry.
Is that motion?
Friend.
And so if this were to pass, this is specific to liquor licenses, correct?
It is, it is not only liquor licenses, uh, so a restaurant that does not have a liquor license would still fall under this, this situation.
That's not super clear.
Yeah, and, and the, the reason that I think it's not is because there are multiple types of liquor licenses for restaurants um, that has been established in the village, and only one of those types of liquor licenses allows restaurants to have outdoor seating. Uh, so that's, that's actually why I put in that extra page listing all the liquor licenses and putting an X next to the ones that would be permitted. Because the way that it's written now, the liquor license would actually, could prohibit outdoor seating if they don't have the correct liquor license. So if you want to change that, we can certainly come back with a change to make it, like, well, all restaurants, you can get rid of the extra technical liquor license and just, just make it um, across the board. Uh, but we didn't want to make that assumption.
So to that point though, and, and I don't know what they applied for, I'm just going off. So Hampshire Social only serves beer and wine.
Right.
That's C one, liquor license is not included in this proposal.
They have a taber license, all right.
C three.
They have C three?
They have a C three?
Yes.
Okay, so they went for a full.
Yes.
Without the receipt, okay. I just, I'm looking at that, and that was one example, I'm like, okay.
They are, I think they are serving like a special drink.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if there were current businesses that we're talking about, if we're talking about doing ordinance, right? Rather than going back months later to again rewrite this, if we take things like that into consideration, so I guess my question to the board would be, like, would we exclude, exclude a restaurant outdoor, serving outdoor, alcohol outdoors? Uh, if all they have want is one for beer and wine.
We can make that change.
Yeah, I think it's just.
And I do want to add too, I mean, because I was thinking, you know, around Dairy Queen, you know, they could easily have a bench out there. We've got Subway, same thing, if they wanted to put something out on the sidewalk by them, that's kind of a strip mall, I don't know.
That's private property.
That's all private property.
Okay, so that's separate.
So my question was gonna go to how are we?
I was gonna say, but we, but we did do it for the tavern there though, the bar. So we had to allow that one, but we wouldn't have to allow for Subway?
We will.
As the ordinance is.
But it's not a public, so we just.
It is a tavern for alcohol.
Oh, for the alcohol, okay.
The sidewalk, right away, because it's a public or it's private property.
Okay, that was kind of the end question to.
That's my understanding, I mean, it's.
It's all private property, but the liquor commission has a legal liquor commission, or it has a pass to.
Now, trustee Robinson, did you want to ask the, I think you were gonna say that right of way, private property? You.
Yeah, this is where I was gonna go, but since it's private, the right of way would be all the way on the seventy-two.
So that's considered, so that can be blocked, the sidewalk next to it, private property, is not under village ordinance control?
Unless you're serving liquor, in that case, it becomes a legal commission responsibility.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not trying to harp on, harp on here, but do they go into the parking lot then?
They, they, we, we discussed this at pretty decent length with both the fire protection district, but it's a fire lane right there.
That's where I was going.
Also safe build, the fire protection district signed off on it, um, you know, as, as we, and so did the, the owner of the property. So it goes into the, the fire lane right there.
Yes.
But it does not extend into the traffic lane of the parking lot, which was the hard line.
Okay.
Um, and the fire protection district is fine with that, because really what their, their purpose is, is to keep vehicles away from the front of the building in case they need to access the building or, or get a, uh, apparatus and then be close to the building, so um, they signed off on.
So my, my question would be then, are they the only establishment where those special circumstances will come into play here? Or are there others in town that we need to look at and really think like, wait a minute, there's a sidewalk here or a fire lane here, or?
We try to consider every, every existing establishment, the one thing that will change is Newman's has been having concerts in the parking lot. Those, those will have to be, that'll have to apply to a large group of people. They, they dispersed throughout the parking lot, that'd be better as long as we get.
How does this apply to locations that have patios? Does the patio already covered under a current liquor license and this is separate?
The back patios?
Yeah, either the, yeah, there's a couple that have back patios, but they're enclosed back patios, so it's like, no space. Is this to, to help with that, or is that already covered?
That's already covered, right.
Okay.
And if there's no traffic, it's your, it's your.
So we creating then a separate, this is new language, um, under article thirteen, page sixty-nine. Required to, so restaurants that are not required to obtain a local liquor license shall be required to obtain an outdoor seating license. So that is a new permit that we would be?
It's, it's actually, it's actually existing in the code, it's just never been enforced. Uh, so what we clarified was that if a, if a business gets a liquor license, they shouldn't need to have to come get another one. At the time of liquor license, we'll get the insurance for them to have uh, uh, outdoor seating and, and the public right of way and everything. But our, our restaurant just opens and wants to put chairs out on the bump outs or whatever the case, then we need, we, we thought it would be good to have some, some type of uh, vehicle to collect insurance and ensure they are aware of the regulations and that kind of thing. Uh, we also discussed, you know, potentially just not doing that at all, and then just dealing with the enforcement on the other side of it, since it's really not a common occurrence for, you know, downtown Hampshire for a new restaurant open on the sidewalk, it's a couple of years maybe.
That's something I would encourage you to give some thought, yeah, because my original thought was, we go, this Garden Berry is the only restaurant that would apply to right now, thank you for it, and ten years from now, it might be twenty restaurants. Uh, now we call it a public. So we, we are just playing a game there, but it, it easily. Not something that's a problem. But there, as Josh said, right now, you're supposed to have licenses, it's just never been enforced in this community until we dug in this. So there is supposed to be, even just a restaurant, it will understand, it's a set of licenses. And that seems a little ominous to us, I, although now in the future.
Can I throw out that they've got the gaming um, business that's going to be opening um, down there on State Street then? So they would be able to apply for this, have outdoor seating?
There's no outdoor seating, no.
For a gaming office still. Okay, so sell that coffee in there too, and?
Yes, it's on the. It's a twenty-one.
On, on that liquor license sheet with all the different licenses on it, they're the very last one, and yeah, it's not considered one of them.
So.
Okay, on page seventy, under license restrictions, um, I am C, referring to um, the license fee sweeping and flushing down the outdoor seating area to prevent any violation of research or degree from this village. Uh, is there anything that says you absolutely are not going to be flushing that down our sewers? And you're going to be picking that up so that it doesn't create a problem in adding more food to it?
Seven fall back, yeah, going for it, I mean, yeah, that would be a, you know, we have another, we have a chapter in our code on public waste of property, and it would be considered, uh, for lack of a better term, illegal dumping or coercive, but something related to that. So no, I would not say that that language is specifically here, though, it would be hard to add.
Sounds like it just kind of leaves it. Ordinance, I mean, you should.
Yeah, there's.
I just want to make sure that when it says flushing down, the option.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, under page seventy-one subsection, um, it says that at all times, a licensee shall comply with all local state or federal laws, ordinances and regulations, including, you know, many to health and sanitation codes. And I think this would directly.
That would cover it, okay.
So what's the board's, did it do, the only thing we, that's different in this uh, draft amendment is uh, adding beer and wine. Uh, do we want to include that and approve this? Or uh, any restaurants that are planning summer stuff now, or do we want to wait for two weeks and have to add the words beer and wine? And readdress it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, since it's not on the agenda for action, we can go back to discussion. I.
Good save.
Um.
I think we should.
Well, we're gonna add.
Yeah. Would you like us to write, to have a license required for outdoor seating for restaurants? It's not.
I want to leave that, in my personal opinion, I don't think a restaurant should have to pay for those. That's just my.
Very good consensus there, thank you. I think with that, we can come back to you with the final ordinance.
Throw out for, on page seventy-one, K, um, just because we are, we have a lot of animals in this community. And K says, no animals other than animals allowed under state law shall be permitted to enter into the premises or restaurants or taverns that have outdoor seating areas. And if somebody's gone out for a walk and they have their dog with them, I mean, walking downtown in Chicago when I used to do that, um, there were dogs there, they were on leashes and, and they were present outside of the evening. So if we're gonna prohibit that, are we prohibiting people that will take their dog for a walk and will stop and get a, you know?
We should discuss that, in fact, I was sending it to my kids who live downtown.
Yeah. That's.
About ready to borrow, I've also seen some dustups starting with those dogs in bars. So we, we aired on that side of caution last year, calling, like, pets permitted. Uh, there just, some people with allergies, other people, afraid of dogs, and dogs sometimes come along.
I'm, I'm, I'd rather not see an animal. Maybe.
Unless it's a service.
Unless it's a service, or whatever circumstance it is, it's, I'd rather not see. My dog, hey, you're saying this, that my wife too, because I can't bring the dog to the restaurant, but I'd rather not see a dog or a cat or any of, just based on allergies. You never know, you cannot fully one hundred percent trust an animal to not bite the next person's, you never know. So I would rather not see.
I don't have the house, but I'm thinking of all of this too, so I.
I would feel uncomfortable sitting at a bar stool and having a, somebody sit next to me, even airing.
Well, this is only outside.
With it, I don't.
Even air.
Trust me, trust me, Kelly. With his dog.
I know it's only outside, but still, I mean, it's, I'd rather air on the side of caution with this and.
I guess I'm mixed on it, because I've been to the places and restaurants, outdoor seating allowed, and some restaurants will even put out bowls for water.
Yeah, I know.
I personally, I'm, as long as your, your cat is on a leash, you know, you are responsible for it, business is responsible if they're, if they choose to, because the business can say no.
There's a lot in town that don't believe.
Well, that's a leash law, so that's, I mean, we have an ordinance for that. Uh, if you're going to be in a public state street area, I would hope that you follow the ordinance, but I'm just saying, I think there are checks and balances in place to make it as safe as possible. I understand the concerns, I'm not discounting concerns, I guess I, uh, sometimes it's not neat to be able to see somebody's out there and just enjoying by themselves, maybe they're reading a book and they're relaxing and sleeping.
I have seen that.
In other places, that's why. But I'm, I'm not discounting some of it.
No, I would love to bring my dog, sit outside a coffee bar. He might, he might snap or something.
No, it's.
It's, it's, he can't understand me when I say that. But he might snap at somebody, he's very, like, he is very protective of my kids, and if I'm there with my kids and my dog's there and you come up to him, he's gonna, he's gonna growl at you, and he might snap. And not because he's a mean rabid dog, that's, he knows he's protecting those kids, and so I don't know, I'm just trying to think of all scenarios where this might not be a good idea, but I mean, I would certainly love to be able to do that, but also on the responsible sides, I don't think I should.
Anything further, uh, Mr. Hedges?
I'm not getting much consensus on that, any other opinions on dogs?
Still, yeah, I'm still concerned about.
We just get a little more feedback, anybody else want to weigh in on dogs?
I'm pro animal, you're sitting outside and you're allergic to animals, there are squirrels, rabbits, turkeys wandering our streets all the time, so. I'm sorry. Yes, um, but again, you have to know your animal and you are responsible for that, so if, if the business owner chooses to allow it, maybe you bring your animal on their premises, you are still responsible. So if you choose to accept that liability, that's.
I don't, would you like to weigh in on this one?
Uh, it'd be near, it's a common thing, see, see, on the inside restaurant, in other places, it's a common thing. I, I weigh, that's your opinion, it's, I, my feelings, it's something that I.
We don't have to prohibit, we can decide on. I'm hearing kind of mixed bag, like, two, four, two against.
I, I'm against.
You're against?
Absolutely.
I would support.
I don't want to sit at a, at a, at an establishment with my hard earned money and keep it watching to make sure I'm not gonna get bit.
I, because we're encouraging people to come downtown, and I'd like to see families, and if they go for a walk, too, because they're popping down State Street. Um, yes, they do have the option to have one of the parents in there to get a non-alcoholic beverage and bring it out that they can carry with them and continue on their walk, but I think it would be a nice idea. I, if, if, depending on the consensus here, I would add to that leash, um, would have to be included on that, and then, I don't know if they call it a tight leash or, you know.
We have to come up with some line for it.
Yeah.
Make it. Clearly replace the word.
Yeah. Cause I would expect it to be right, I mean, if you keep that leash super tight, that dog is just gonna be sitting right next to your chair. Um, you know, don't strangle the animal or anything, but I mean, it's obviously, it's, has to sit right there, so.
I think we will just take a shot at it, we'll make it so that it can easily be amended, one way or the other.
I wanted to throw penalties.
Pardon me?
Penalties on page seventy-two, um, any person who violates any provision of this article shall be fined not less than twenty-five dollars, not more than seven hundred and fifty. Um, each day, the violation continues, so, um, one, if that that's discretionary, is that up to the judge, if there's an ordinance violation written, and the judge can go from twenty-five to seven fifty?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, that would be up to the, the judge, if there is a violation. They would add the discretionary to twenty-five dollars or seven hundred and fifty.
Do we add any, I mean, I'm assuming just because it's statutory, it's written, and do we have all fines that are?
Yeah, that's typically the range.
It is, okay. Tip off the judge.
Anything further? Mr. Hedges?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, you have in front of you the uh, monthly staff reports, anything on the March building report? Brad?
If I can ask, other village fees collected, it really increased twenty-five percent between those months and this month?
Yeah, those are mostly impacting transition fees, so as new homes increase with the month, those fees increase, and nineteen new single family homes this month, so. It's a nice, high series.
And nineteen new single family homes this month, so it's a nice, high series of time.
So slow inventory of existing homes that everybody's buying new homes, so our new homes are.
Public Works, you have the Public Works report in front of you. Show some of the things they've done, I don't know if anybody's driven around and seen some of the SSA Todd's work that the villagers done, it's uh remarkable what it was to what it is now. Oh, and you know, some of the weather for all of the overseeing of the special uh mix they planted to like grow. Budgets. What?
Places.
Oh, police, sorry.
What does that tell you, just a question?
I'll just say questions.
Anything in your report that's concerning?
Concerning me, no.
Anything that should be celebrated?
There's always celebration.
Might talk a little bit about.
Yeah, so, uh, oh, yeah, I should mention that because we're changing the location. Um. The uh National Night Out is uh still scheduled for uh Tuesday, August first, that's that's when it's across the country. Uh, we've been, uh, Sean and Nevis and I have been discussing plans for putting that together to activities, and we originally were going to do it downtown. Um, but as we talked about the different types of things we wanted to do, um, some of the ideas that come up with much more can be situated apart. Um, is, you know, have in grass and kids running around and such, so um, I think we're going to switch that to um, Free Park and and Sean is going to talk to the park about that. Um, what works? What are, we need the brood street. Um, yeah, lots of parking, I mean, there's lots of parking around there, it's just really, um, just a user. Um, so. I think we want to keep that, we started to approach the park.
This will be the first time.
It is, yeah. Yep, to flag. Our, you talking about the memorial dedication? Yeah, well, actually, I was going to talk about that for that April report, but I can talk about it.
Oh, all right, then.
When you have to say on the on the National Night Out, it's great to see that we're going to participate, because I always wonder, as he says, what it was, and I have to look up, because Dundee would always have signs everywhere somewhere, here going ahead. Carpenter'sville would have signs, and I'm like, is this thing?
Well, exactly, they, the first firm, basically, least part of it, involving.
It's awesome.
They've been doing that for years.
It's really, it's really just a, I mean, all different types of communities do it different ways, you know, and it's just a matter of what type of events do we want to put together? You know, so like, one of the things that we think we're going to do this time would be, um, where we'll have activities in the beginning and then and then like the second half of the night, we're talking about just doing a family movie. And, you know, and having the kids, yeah, do the inflatable screen with the kids and serve popcorn and just kind of have it just smile off for the rest of it, you know, that's one of the reasons we want to. Yeah, you could do really whatever you want, so you can do an hot dogs and then also have some food trucks and other, um, other options, should you want.
Chief, you noted that uh last meeting that you wanted to increase field interviews and push it, and I see that you got three of them.
Few more, yeah. You know, I mean, the good thing is that there's not a lot of, you know, not a lot of suspicious characters wandering around, um, in Hampshire, so I mean, it's not necessarily a if it's low, it's not necessarily a bad thing, you know, as long as, you know, as long as the options are being. So, um, a couple of things, since I started talking, um, we are planning, I know that the the school shootings have been, um, you know, in the news more so lately, just I mean, it's, it seems like it's just, you know, always, but um, it's always a concern, we are planning a full scale um scenario uh for active shooting training this summer in one of the schools. Uh, it's going to be multi jurisdictional and partnership with fire department, so um, we're hoping to get um, angry Gilberts and Humley and the and Kane County Sheriff and um, state lease involved in the Hanford Fire Protection District. And uh and de-escalation, so we're, we we do, we did accept our Vertra three hundred simulator, the build out is nowhere near completion, but it's going to be starting soon. The demo is already done, um, and it's fully permitted now, so we'll probably be starting that in the next week. Um, the, along with that is this de-escalation train, we identified a couple of different ways we're going to approach that, um, there's de-escalation training that is a um, actually sponsored by the Department of Justice, um, and and really, it's it's Fort Hayes in Indiana, I think. Or his university, that's that's funded through the DOJ to provide this training. So there's an eight hour online training that the officers can do, and then we're also sending two of our officers down to Decatur in May, um, because there's another nationally recognized program called ICAT, and they they built a twenty million dollar facility in Decatur to teach this statewide. And and we're going to have two officers in their first class down. And um, so, and and it's really, normally it's eight hundred and fifty dollars a person plus lodging and and there it's going to be totally covered for a season, so. I know, I take that back there, you guys pay for all. But anyways, so so we should be able to put together some really good de-escalation training along with that training segment.
Okay. Chris Paulson, engineering report?
Yeah, any uh, any questions?
Mr. Paulson, what's the estimated time that we're going to actually get the street lights and traffic signals? For State Street?
I'm probably better than Tim is.
Okay, because I stare at that every time that I see that, I'm like.
It's Kurt Devon, yeah, I use managing that project for us, and I just had an update from, I had an update from the IDA, they don't have.
They don't.
I think I reported here a couple of months ago already. I'm fairly confident that I did, that uh they found out that the the material had not been ordered from Springfield like sixty days ago, after we were told it would be arriving in February, it hadn't even been ordered yet, they thought it had been, there's some clearing process, I guess, which is Springfield, and I uh and just got stuck.
So someone's in Springfield kind of stuff?
Yeah. Shocked that that would happen, it was a document, it was required, but they just threw it aside because the document wasn't there, rather than going back and asking. So the materials were just ordered, holes were just, this just, it's not the village's street lights, but they're still on that order as well. For my sake, so. So it's, it's at this point, the good news is we have lights out there, but there's not.
Are they still caused, because I know people will get on and talk about the fact that it's one part, every now and then there's a glitch and.
I haven't heard that lately.
I haven't either, that's why.
I did experience it myself, in fact. Thing we didn't want to make public is if you just pull up a little further, activate the light, but we didn't want people pulling in the intersection to find that out, so we kept working with the IDA, I think they made adjustments now.
Okay, so it's.
And they have shared with us, I think I might have shared it with all of you, because they share with us the actual program and the new light, how it's going to work, once the permanent lights are up. It's rather technical, but if you're interested.
I do have a question about that intersection, I don't know, Mr. Paulson, if this is for you or Mr. Hedges, he would know. And and I'm just stating this because I've seen some of the the youth crossing that area, um, after school has gotten out, and I realized that the east west crosswalk that goes from the gas station over towards where Empack Park is has crosshatches painted into it, but the north south crosswalk that they would go from Empack over to the chicken dip area does not. And it's just two thin white lines go across, where one crosswalk is very clearly visible, that this is the crosswalk and the other side is not as visible. Is there a reason why one was built out or painted in one way and the other is painted in a in a less visible way?
I I don't know, off the top of my head, I'd I'd have to look back at the plans, it's been a while since I've looked at those, so. It's not.
I recall discussing that, Tim, and Kurt Kurt will have the answer, I just don't recall what it is, because I asked the very same question.
Okay, because I see it like on the east west, no one's going outside that crosswalk that I've seen, or south, people are.
I don't think that's actually the crosswalk, though, I think those hash marks are actually to keep cars from stopping.
No, that's because they match the where the sidewalk opens and goes across, so.
I'll I'll check with Kurt.
It just seems like people know this is where I'm supposed to go, and on the other side, they can't.
It may be because we don't have the the traffic signals up yet, the media. Yeah. Signals come, I think that was the answer, but I'll check with Kurt.
Okay.
Tim, the only question I have is, or Jake, on the streetscape out here, I noticed the yellow center line is fading extremely fast on that cement, will Alliance uh re-strike that under warranty?
We have a punch list that we're going to be going through any day now.
Okay.
There's several things there that have to be addressed up.
Yeah, there's some bricks now missing.
Right.
Right, for the extra social.
I have noticed the actual bricks missing yet.
Oh, yeah, there's big blanks, white spaces where some of those red brick painted things are.
Oh, the painted ones, yeah, not the brick papers, because they're just. But yeah, that that, actually, I met with that company twice. They told that's very durable, they use it at all the stop signs in Chicago, and he has the contract for that, so I was really surprised to see those things are clearly bad. So, yeah, we have, Kurt Devon's going to be doing a walkthrough, but develop punch lists for all streetscape, including any kind of any plants or anything that didn't survive the winter. But it does look like our trees are blooming, isn't it?
Yeah, that was nice.
Shanty clear pairs, thanks, code.
I already get.
Be surprised how you get the shape of the tree, and they have to worry about the root structure, too, and it's going to get into the sewers of the buildings.
It's surprising that they do have trees.
Okay, you did on the other day. Any, anything else? Okay, let's move to accounts payable, your packet, you'll have uh the twenty, April twentieth, twenty twenty three accounts payable personnel for the amount of five hundred thirty three dollars and seventy two cents. Motion's been made second. Oh, no, there's not a second. Motion now has been made, so. Any questions concerning that? For the third.
This folder. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe. Mr. Matt. Miss Paul Street. Miss Robinson.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, and next you have the uh, the general fund. For five hundred ninety six thousand six hundred forty three dollars and four cents. Is there any questions?
Page one oh four, for Stark and Sun Trenching, I just wanted to to see, did we actually replace four hydrants? What's what, I keep thinking we were only going to do two.
Sure that it would be.
I I see, I want to make sure.
The last four of the older ones in Cold Time. Down to maybe one or two left.
One or two left, okay. Um, my other question, one oh five, for Urban Hydro, it's a FEMA grant application, and I was wondering if that was for the testing of the runoff that we had talked about in the previous meeting, or what that was for?
That's for the uh park and rim.
Oh, it's for park and rim then, okay.
We will get charged for that, correct?
I'm sorry.
The uh, the state mandated law now that says these water treatment plant has to test the water downstream. Will we be doing that in-house, or will we have a, does the company do that?
I believe we've already engaged, yeah, to do that, and so.
Okay.
We, I think there was quite a bit of discussion here about. Something that frankly doesn't make a lot of sense to us, but.
Maybe that's our village, because we're doing it right, but there's some out there, you don't know, so.
The concern is that most of the runoff is probably coming from the farms, because that's where hospitals are put, we have to prove that by saying it's not coming from us, because the farmers aren't willing to. Or maybe the legislature is not willing to ask farmers today.
Any other questions? We have a motion to approve the April twenty 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 three regular accounts payable in the amount of five hundred ninety six thousand six hundred and forty three dollars and four cents to be paid out before April twenty sixth. Second. Motion's been made in second, for any further questions? For the third, I'll roll.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Miss Paul Street. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Miss Folder. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, now we move on to Village Board Committee reports, the Business Development Commission.
Uh, BDC met last Wednesday, uh, and we spent some time during the meeting uh refining and going over some of the final decisions for the presentation that Chairman Kurjaki will be presenting to the board on the recommendations for strategic initiatives. Um. Uh, proposed strategic initiatives and the process to how we got there, so there, that was the majority of the meeting, we also discussed um, some potential succession planning for Chairman Kurjaki, as he will be, uh, as we know, stepping down as chairman of the BDC. Uh, so there's discussion around that, Mr. Hedges spoke to business updates for local businesses. And anything else?
We do have an African for the vacancy on BDC now. Chairman Kurjaki forwarded resumes yesterday.
I did want to note that Gardenberry is putting the brick up.
Oh, yes, I should give that out, so.
Dry, dry cutting the mortar. Dry cutting the cement.
They, um, that was one of the updates for the facade program, is that uh they were starting the construction this week, and within the next week or two, the Gardenberry will be completely done.
Maybe they get done for the end of this year, which is next Friday.
Yeah.
How how does the uh appointment of a new chairman work for the committee?
Yes, the way that the chair or any position on the BDC would work for appointment would be that, uh, historically, the chairman of that committee, whichever committee it may be, in this case, the BDC, along with the village president, would need to discuss the various applications, and they would come to a recommendation, bring a recommendation to the board for uh appointment to.
Don't know, for, since Chairman Kurjaki is stepping down, who's going to chair the committee then?
That, I think, is probably the recommendation that will come before this board, will be for the chair.
Okay.
One of the, I I will, just in in uh full transparency with this board, I did say that uh I I actually like that the trustee representative or the village board representative on that commission is not the chairman of that commission, agreed? Uh, and so that was my recommendation for them to consider is that the the trustee that is on that commission not be considered for the uh the chairman, or chairperson, I should say, sorry, uh, of that committee or commission, whomever they may recommend, but I believe because that opening is going to exist, the person would be recommended, there may be two, there may be a recommendation for the chairperson and a recommendation to fill a vacancy.
Although at this point, none of the city members uh have agreed to chair. Have expressed an interest to be the chair. We may have to twist a few arms or point.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have updates in the next meeting, or probably in the next meeting. Um, any questions for BDC?
Okay.
Uh, Public Works, you got your the report that House will submitted earlier under the Streets Report. Is there any question concerning, um, Public Works is currently doing. Well, I live there, I don't know the name of the street. So anyway. Uh, concrete company's finished, uh, they went through there and everything is landscaped, now it's just grinding and resurfacing.
So we're going to be using, yeah, we're going to be using those grinds for some parking area by the village hall sites, separate apartment.
And Public Works was responsible for cutting out all of those cutouts?
Yes.
Storm drains.
Storm drains.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sure that saved us a ton of money to have them do it instead of.
Big time, right? Maybe, maybe we put this out as a, as a, you weigh the bidding requirements, again, it probably saves us sixty percent of our project.
They did a wonderful job, thank you to Public Works for that. Yeah.
Okay, budget. Public relations.
We met last Thursday, we discussed types of push notifications to go out on the app. Um, specifically storms, emergency situations, um, if a water main breaks in a particular area, that type of thing, so again, urgent and emergent situations. Um, we also planned the newsletter topics you'll be seeing most soon, and also your water bill will be changing format. Um, sadly, not the volume or your price, but yes, you will be seeing a different look to your bill um, in your future, just not on this one, probably it'll be the July.
That's the expectation, July.
Okay, yeah, so just don't be surprised or the way that it's coming.
Could we post something on the Hampshire site? The Park District installed, I installed, a uh lightning detection system at all the parks, and if there's lightning within ten miles, uh, that way that are are vertical, uh, there's a big blast. And then after the lightning is passed for a certain period of time, you got three short blasts, which is clear, people are getting confused during storms that that blast is a tornado warning, and we've posted it, but man, people just don't read it. And we've posted it, but man, people just don't read it.
That'd be good. For you taking the newsletter.
It might be a good idea if we better read some of them, so on the website, so people could just listen to the two different ones, so they could hear them.
I'd have to climb up there and activate.
Yeah. If you would have told me earlier, I could have done that while I was there.
Well, it went up when you were there. Over at there. Okay. Any new business?
Yes, Mr. Coth, I do have an announcement, I'd like, I'd like to inform the board that this morning, Light Properties did complete their new zoning application and, uh, they are now requesting M two zoning on the lovely property and the Shireland property did not, they did not be submitted for the Higgins Road property. So there's no action on that being requested. Uh, the planning and zoning, uh, public hearing will be on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. We have made arrangements for the middle school again, so there's plenty of room for public. I believe that's all there really is, the, uh, document will be, has been posted as of today.
The draft is still up by now, but tomorrow I will put up the new one.
As of tomorrow, the new one will be up and all the notifications will go up tomorrow, the postings, the signs and everything will go up tomorrow.
What is the current zoning on that property, you know?
It's not in a village right now, so it's not zoned as a village.
Can you say again, you said no, they are not requesting the Higgins Road property, but yes, they are requesting the.
The M two on the Shireland property, Shireland, the property is what we call the property behind that.
That'll be like the Detroit Room?
Yes.
Because Higgins is old Higgins.
Right. So, for third, that's.
New that was planning and zoning in May?
Yes, planning, that'll be a public hearing, pretty similar to the last one. We, I will say that they, they have expanded their team, they do intend to provide a lot more information. I think we learned that lesson last time when somebody in the audience stood up and said, maybe they should do more like what Crown did. Um, and so I think they took that to heart and brought in some additional expertise.
So they're requesting M two instead of M three?
Yeah, I requested M three, yes, and now it's M two.
Now it's M two, okay, will we be anticipating a, like, board meeting on the road again?
Well, it depends on what happens at the planning and zoning commission, but I would expect so.
Okay. And on that note, is there any way to, there's, there, we still have no capabilities to record if we.
Right, there's still, there's still, well, we do have a tape recording and a transcript, uh, there's not, uh, there's no capability to the school broadcast.
So recording stuff, there's a lag time to actually get that processed.
Yes, it took, it took about ten days, I think, to get this transcript last time, and I don't think anybody ordered the recording, that's only somebody requests that that we would order the recording.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Other question, um, I don't ride a bicycle anymore, Diana Rizan asked me a couple of questions about bicycles. He thought that, uh, she wasn't allowed to ride a bicycle on State Street, is that correct or incorrect?
That is not correct, shouldn't be riding one on the sidewalk, the kids do, but you can ride a bicycle on State Street.
And the second question that was asked was, uh, do we intend to put any, uh, parking facilities for, for like bike racks for parking for people that ride in town?
The only bike rack right now, I think, is in front of the library, uh, we are, we are applying for a grant, I don't know if I mentioned this at the last board meeting, we are applying for a grant, um, that so, yeah, fifty thousand dollar potential, um, what's it?
Oh, the, the T-Mobile home?
Yeah, T-Mobile has a, a program that can only fund, uh, I think it's twenty projects nationwide, pretty much two from ten states, is what they did last year. Uh, but it's fifty thousand dollar, it's a total of a million dollars and maximum fifty thousand dollars, and it's really perfect for the things that we've had to cut on the streetscape, but funds didn't go far enough. So we're, we're looking at, uh, some nice trash receptacles, the ones we have out there getting really beat up. Um, potentially the lights, the cantonary lights, we had a company out this, uh, this week to look at the lighting, uh, the material cost of the lighting is gonna be very affordable. That's the installation cost, we had an installer come out now, we're gonna see what that's gonna cost and, uh, I believe I'm confident, what, confident it'll be well under fifty thousand dollars. So I think we're gonna put together four or five different things, if you have any ideas, uh, for State Street about additional amenities, uh, but specifically the weight finding signs, uh, the verification committee, that's one other thing that was discussed at the BDC briefly. As we've, they've come up now, they're very close to a recommendation for new weight finding signs that are larger and more readable. Um, we haven't seen what they look like, I'm confident that we're gonna get taste, Mr. Small was history with us. So those are the things that we expect to apply for and, uh, we don't get the grant, we do have money in the budget for trash receptacles. Um, it's in the budget, we just approved, uh, but if, and if we get the grant, that would be a matching, that'd be an opportunity to sure be the entire batch that would. It's not required, but improve our scoring. Josh is gonna put the grant application together himself, so we don't have to hire a grant writer, and it's not due until June sometime, so. It'll be a while before we, well, it's due in June, we should probably hear something in July or August.
Doesn't T-Mobile have a, a tower somewhere in one of our water towers?
I'm sure they do.
Okay. We don't get it?
I think a lot of communities probably say the same.
To that point, you were asking what else, um, I think the bike racks, but also, um, but also a skateboard rack, which I saw when I was touring colleges in Colorado and I was like, oh, wow, this is awesome, so. That would be, I'm sure, not expensive.
Mr. Chairman, am I able to answer, ask a question?
No.
I do have, um, just two points I wanted to make, and, and first I wanted to say thank you for the public coming out. Um, I think public comments help us to be a richer board, hearing specifics and things that are around the community, so I did want to make that. Um, I did wanna follow up on two things that were said today, and I could follow up on a lot of things that were said today, but I, I did wanna hit two points, and, and the one was the FOIA requests. Um, and if we're not able to fill them within that time period, I just wanna respectfully ask to see if we can at least reach out to the person who's requesting to advise them, hey, we're working on it. Um, just to black out and not have any contact at all, I just, so.
Certainly understand, and, and Josh explained this at the public hearing, I believe any of you were there. Uh, our website is down for a period of days and we missed, I believe, nineteen different FOIA requests, that's, that's why those were late. Um, we also, we also had an interpretation by the attorney general just this week. We had been advised by council that, uh, working documents, draft documents, uh, development agreements were not FOIABLE. And that's been an interpretation, and so we denied those and that was appealed. And in discussion with the attorney general just this week, we decided to go ahead and release those documents. We think there's still a pretty good case that could be made, but frankly, we didn't wanna be the village that was named in the lawsuit, in the village pantry against the state of Illinois for not being transparent, that's not our purpose. So even the, even though we think there's a probably a pretty good argument, the, the only reason we were concerned is because oftentimes we're negotiating with two different developers and those, those development agreements interact in some ways. And it's not, it, it's not always the best for them to see each other's agreement, it's good, you know, for the public to see it, that's not a problem, but if it's FOIABLE, then the other developers can also, uh, request it, so. That's the downside of it, but we err on the side of transparency in this case, so we did release those, in fact, that way, we requested sent out just this morning. We should have been sent to them.
My second point then was, and I've heard, I heard today, I've heard it, um, people contacting me, you know, emails and phone calls about the noise level from the Toll Plaza with the idling trucks. And that, you know, they're, they're parking, I mean, we heard today about where they're parking along, um, twenty, but they're idling in other parking lots and they're for the long periods of time, it's gotten to be quite loud. We do have residents that may not be our residents, but that are in that area, so I don't know if there's a way that we could, you know, I know there's noise ordinances, et cetera, if something is that loud, but.
We actually don't have a noise ordinance in our town.
We don't?
No, it's, it came up at our staff meeting recently, it's something that Chief Pan would like us to consider. So we'll be bringing you some plan of a noise ordinance soon, whether it'll address that or not, I can't say for sure. I was concerned when I heard the comment that they're parking along Route twenty, cuz that, that should not be permitted, and our police department won't permit that. So if they are parking on the side of the road, they can certainly make them disperse or ticket them.
They've been parked on the side of Detroit Road for thirty years, or however long that truck stops by there.
That should not be permitted, so Chief Pan will take a look at that. But in terms of what they, you know, those parking lots are, you know, designed for idling trucks, that's what they do, in winter time, they rarely turn, vehicles often, frankly, in the summer rarely either.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, just one, one thing, um, so last Tuesday, I had the honor of representing the village in the Hampshire Town meeting. Uh, it's an annual meeting that the township puts on, um, it's the most interesting meeting I've been at because it's the only one I've been to where everybody who shows up from the town gets a vote and can make motions and it's very interesting, which was kinda cool to see. So in this meeting, the township and the various organizations within the township, like the, the highway commissioner, um, give their reports, it's an annual report of what's happened throughout the year. There was a report by the cemetery, uh, chair, um, uh, and some interesting things, there was some great accolades given to one of our businesses, um, WR Meadows, who worked with the cemetery, um, board on getting a set, an, an older cemetery in Hampshire that has not had its boundaries surveyed or marked in a very long time, and there were no markers out in the field. The property of us, the, the WR Meadows and the president and CEO of the business was out there while they were surveying, it was like, whatever you need, just go ahead and do. Uh, to make sure that it would be secured, they wanna put a fence around it because one part of it, that tames farm development backs up to. Um, also, they gave credit to Crown, there was a, I don't wanna say an issue, but there was a variance in where property lines ended and where the cemetery fence was. So the cemetery fence had to be moved with in, I believe is where it was, um, and Crown covered the cost of having that fence moved in. Took care of it, so that it wouldn't be an issue with property lines, which was really nice to see. There was also, I gave the village report that President Reed wrote, uh, on what the village had done. Uh, and then opened it to anything that they would like to see from the village in the future, and some of the things that had come up, just so that the board is aware. Um, roadwork at Main Street coming into town, they said there's a couple of really big dips, so when cars are going down, you can get headlights in your eyes, again, um, from the north. There's a, a concern, uh, for people on, this was shared, so as you know, at, we will be closing one of the crossings over the railroad tracks. And then the other one will become a sideline crossing or quiet zone crossing, right? And so there was a concern that people on the north side of the tracks, like people that work at the township or, uh, the various businesses, there's the water treatment, there's the petroleum, uh, place over there. That they'll be trapped, uh, between the creek on one side and railroad tracks on the other side, with not many ways to egress out of there should there be an urgency with that crossing being closed, so that was a concern that was raised. They also, this was a, an interesting one, cuz I don't know that we've ever talked about it, at least not any of the discussions that I had been involved with, is there a way through the village can work with developers to add variability to the look and feel and aesthetics to the homes? So the comment was, if you go down Allen Road and you look at some of those developments, they're all very similar, they're all very brown or beige. They, that it just, it becomes homogenous looking and there's no aesthetics to it, so could that be part of what the, the village considers? Uh, with the growth of Hampshire, it's felt that there could be greater demands on the developers. Um, progress is seen by the village has been great to see, so the people that were there said, progress, they've seen the village has been great. There are comments that the village has become very good to work with, that it was a very professionally run organization, that the relationships have gotten much better over the past couple of years. Uh, and there were staff called out specifically for their great work with the village. Um, specifically Mr. Hedges, for being a village. And there were also questions about the adult living facility that had been presented in one of the village board meetings as a concept because in the, um, the senior meetings that they had presented to the senior group, and the senior group was very excited about that property. Uh, which they said isn't always the case when they're presented with these type of properties and that it had a really positive outlook and people were really excited, they just wondered how's it going in the process and we see that. So overall, pretty positive, uh, towards the village with some suggestions on things to consider. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, and that it is open to all, I'm sure township residents. One interesting thing too, that, and correct me if I'm a successor, if I'm wrong, that was also stated is the, um, developments are going up, farmland is going down, and that the new, is it twenty-five thousand? Price per acre for farmland?
It's about twenty, yeah, twenty thousand.
Twenty, so the new, uh, value of an acre of farmland is twenty thousand and some acres and some purchases are even up to fifty thousand an acre. And so, um, we will continue to see farmland in the area, now that doesn't say the farmland is sold and then somebody develops on it, it's just the sell, sale of the farmland, that there is less farmland this year than there was the year before or the year before. Did I get that correct?
Yes, and, yeah, since they gave the report, we could, it's gone down.
Yeah, so that's even going, yes, last week.
Anything else? I entertain a motion for adjournment. Sir, second, all in favor, Secret President Sanai?
Aye.
Oppose?